All right, we do have a quorum, so we're gonna go ahead and call the Board of Commissioners for Sunset Empire Transportation District to order for Thursday, January 26th. And Mary, would you like to do a pledge of allegiance?
Commissioner Buschman?
I'm here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Whoopsie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Nino?
Pledge allegiance or after a call.
Here.
Commissioner Legria?
Here.
Commissioner Withers on his way. Commissioner Romero?
Present.
And Commissioner Reed? Here. Sorry, I like to just change those two around for some reason, because I think I did it last month, too. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
None.
Nobody else? All right. Any other comments? Okay. All right, there's Charles.
Hi, Charles.
Okay.
Charles, you're muted.
Is my audio working?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Any other comments? So approval of the board meeting minutes.
I move to approve the board meeting minutes as presented.
No second.
Can you mention the dates of December 9th and January 13th? There's two sets.
In November.
For December 9th and for January 13th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
We have a second.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, for the December 9th, maybe, just read this, on page 6 of four, the last sentence, number four. It says recommend, not recommended that decisions be made after the second executive session. I thought we only had one. No, you did have two. Okay. Okay. Do you want grammar corrections? Okay. Okay, so on page 7, under the number 7, it'd be, it's not a sentence, but 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line. It should be, state yourself that there was an error. You see what that is?
Yes.
Okay. This way. Okay. Okay, and then, this is, this is a, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 10. It's employment at will, isn't that the expression, rather than employee at will?
Yes.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Well, it's okay how it's written.
Again, okay, I've always heard employment at will, and so I wasn't sure of that.
But that's what, that's what the individual said, so that's why Mary wrote it that way.
Okay. Oh, I see, okay. Okay. Okay, if you really want me to go, okay. Well, okay, page 10. The second line. It should be reviewed with tragic fatal accident. And then, this is just parallel structure. I'm on a roll here. Hellcrest Road and submitted a letter of recommendation. I think that.
What?
It sounded good when I admitted.
Instead of Hellcrest Loop Road and a letter?
No, no, just to add it.
Yeah, and then submitted a letter.
Yeah, submitted a letter. A letter, and then you add the.
Is there anything else you want to correct in that sentence?
Because there is a number 6.
Yeah. I see.
There's I L's instead of my.
Yep, there you go.
Spelling team. Okay, sequence the spelling.
Yeah, I found it, too.
Okay. Everybody's on a roll here. Okay, page 11. Under 5A, the third line. But should we, seems this is duplicated. Hazen explained the history of program began 2007. It would, I think you can just delete. Hazen said, and then go, it was part of the, yeah, he, or I don't care.
I do have a question about that. I did circle HB 2017. Is that indeed the?
That was the House number.
Yeah, it was sort of like the year was the same.
Same as the year. The stars align.
Okay, that's it.
Thank Deanna.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm, I also have some suggestions on corrections. So on page 7, under item 7, towards the bottom of that paragraph. So it'd be 1, 2, 3 lines up from the bottom on item 7. So it says, your investigations to be completed and not waiting for BOLI. That BOLI is an acronym, so it should be all in capital letters, B-O-L-I.
Thank you.
Next, on page 8, under item 10, reports from commissioners. So line 3, it says Booth Schmidt also said that we do have some hiccups. That hiccups should be H-I-C-C-U-P-S.
Okay. Oh, got it. There is one more on 10. It's not your turn to choose.
I probably got it for you. So also on item 10, line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Unsung heroes, that should be plural, H-E-R-O-E-S, heroes, not a apostrophe. Then on page 10, under item C, letter to the Oregon Department. So on line 3, towards the end, from 50 to 40 miles per hour, it's missing M. And then, still under the item C, below the box with our votes, I name motion passed. Then Commissioner Nino moved to amend, not amended. And that's it for me. We're being spelling police today.
It's part, we should advertise it in part 1, English Grammar, part 2, Transit.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
That's okay.
Did you have anything else? Is there any other? No? If there's no other discussion. If Mary would take a roll call when she's that hot up there?
Okay.
That would be great. Okay. Commissioner Buschman? Hi. Commissioner? You're fine. Commissioner Nino?
Aye.
Commissioner Legria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
And Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to financials. And we have financials for two months also.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good morning.
Any questions for me this morning?
Can we get a motion to approve the name we can discuss?
Could we do it separately, for months?
So whoever makes the motion, if they make the motion just for the first month?
Okay.
For the January?
Yes. I move to approve the financials for January 2023.
How about December?
And August, December 1st. One at a time?
Yeah.
For December 2022.
Okay, do I have a second?
You second it.
Okay. All right. Kelly, go.
Questions on, are we doing December 1st? Okay, any questions on December?
Pamela?
On page 13. Oh.
Is that the January?
No, this is December.
December.
It's very odd. No, it's December. Okay, under timber sales, there, the item number is different from that on the consolidated statement. So it's 4310. And on your exceptions information report, it's 4250. Oh, page 15.
You see that, Kelly?
I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't. On the exceptions report, it's under what number?
250, timber sales.
Timber sales, 4250.
On the consolidated.
Oh, and it's 4310. How did I do that?
Oh, lack of sleep.
You could be correct on that. I'll fix that.
Okay. And then, okay, I'm concerned about page 16. For uninsured loss, $8,398. Was there a bad accident or something?
Not a bad accident. This line is for, if we do have an accident or an incident, we have a deductible on our auto policy of $5,000. And we had to, that we had to pay out.
So there would be about 2, 2, 3?
Yeah.
Okay.
What line was that again?
And that's 8105. Okay. Okay, see, a legal counsel, since they will be used a bit, is different, that professional services. 8001 is just like computers and stuff. And then 8002 is just legal. In other words, is there legal in 8001 as well, or not?
No, 8001 is professional services, 8002 is legal.
Okay, so sometime I foresee perhaps that we're in, need to move some money over for legal. Something to keep in mind, to look now where that move could be.
Well, we've got, we're under expenses for everything by 73, over 73,000.
Yeah.
So we're fine, so we won't need to do
Yeah, but.
An adjustment at this point.
Now, when you do that, do you tell the board or show it on the statement that you moved money?
The statement is on, here on page 17, it shows what the variance is. Year to date, the budget was 652,057. We've only spent 578,000.
No, that isn't what I mean. And what I mean is, is, okay, so the budget is, was 2,495, right?
For legal counsel, you're correct.
Okay. So I think, I'm trying, if you needed $5,000 more, would it show, would the board be able to tell that you took that 5,000 from another line item?
No, we don't, we don't do that. We're concerned about that bottom line, that last number. That's what the board is responsible for, for reporting to the state, for stating on budget. We don't, we don't adjust budgets within a different line item.
Line items.
What we do do, though, is as we write the next budget, you know, we'll keep that in mind for the next budget.
And so that's okay with an auditor?
Oh, absolutely. There's three numbers. Personnel services, materials. Full expense. That's what the auditor looks at. They look at that bottom number. They don't care about all these individual things. We actually don't even have to have this before the board. We, we could just put out a report that says these three numbers, but we know that the board likes the information.
Okay.
Yep.
And let's see. I know I've probably asked this before, and this is page 20, I think I have, but I didn't stick in my head, since it's a large number. For 1030, which means local government investment pool has a lot of money in it. So I just wanted to refresh what that money was.
So those were the property taxes.
Oh, really?
Yep. When we receive, start receiving property taxes, generally late October, early November, it goes directly into our OBT.
Why don't you call it property taxes?
We have other things that go into that account as well, but it's.
Oh, there are. Such as what?
There's a state, one of our state payments goes in there as well, but it's mainly property taxes. And it's named LGIP because it's the, that's the bank.
That's a what?
Local government, that's the, like, the bank name.
And if I could jump in here, Pamela? On page 15, property taxes are a lot.
Right, I knew that.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
This is just the balance sheet.
So this is the whole kit and kaboodle?
This is the balance sheet, yeah.
Okay.
This shows our assets.
And so is that the other pot of money, the one with the state employees? Something with an M, which I've forgotten what it means.
What's that?
With the state employees, does that pot of money goes in here, too?
What? Which line item are you referring to?
Well, it's some kind of percentage with state employees.
Oh, that live in the district.
Does that go in this pot of money, too?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
I did have one because it just looks funny to me, and it's not a big one, but it's other income laminating fees?
We charge a dollar to laminate?
Off the taxes.
Got it, okay. It just looked funny that it was under revenue and not expenses, so.
I know, I guess I could call it laminating income.
Does anybody else have anything for December? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Nino?
Deanna, go ahead.
Thank you. So I believe this one goes under December on page 24. This is the aging as of 12/31. Does that go under December?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So then, towards the bottom, the item is 6368, SDIS claims. There's quite a few. There's six of them, and they add up to 28,398. What are these and why are they all separate?
What page are you on?
24.
Page 24, towards the bottom, SDIS claims.
There's four of them for December.
They continue, oh yeah, for December, you're correct.
Those are the, for the, like, that we saw on the uninsured loss. So those are for our portion for the accidents that have happened.
That's our deductible.
Our deductible. Thanks, Jeff.
So we've had a lot of accidents in November, December, January?
Not necessarily. They, they could have been spread out through the year. They, they were just settled during these months.
Oh, I see. So they, they, it's kind of like they do it, uh, okay, yeah, because I was kind of surprised that the invoice date goes back to October, November, December. It's, so I wasn't sure, like, why have these? Are we just settling these now?
It's when the insurance company settles them, and then they send us all the final. And then that's when we process it. And so I date it for when, the date that, that they show.
Yeah, these don't actually reflect the dates of the incidents, correct, Kelly?
No, they don't.
Because you, you've already forecasted one at the bottom of page 24 that we're going to be paying out, but we're going to have something on the 29th of this month. I think you mentioned, but 22, 2022.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Were these accidents, I don't know if this is the board's purview or not, due to problems with the buses, or?
I, I don't have the individual reports on these. Anytime there's an incident, we, we do review it. The safety committee also reviews it. And Jennifer can't be here today, otherwise she could probably let you know which ones were which.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for December? Mary, would you mind doing a roll call? Commissioner Buschman?
Aye.
Commissioner Nino?
Aye.
Commissioner Legria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
She's on mute.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, aye.
They're like the number.
Oh, yeah, that's my motto.
Now I would look for a motion for, November or January?
January.
November.
Motion, motion to approve in November, is it November? Motion to approve November minute, Treasury report, excuse me, there.
Okay. Seconds, okay, thank you. Is there any questions or discussions? Or Kelly, do you have anything to let us know? That we should know?
I don't have anything. Nothing, nothing extra than, than what I put in there, just the basics.
Any questions or discussion from the board? I just have one question. On the credit cards, or when you list them out as being reconciled, is that for each different credit card? Is that one thing?
It's for each individual's card, yeah.
Anything else? Hey, Mary, would you do a roll call for the? For November. Commissioner Buschman?
Oh, aye.
Commissioner Nino?
Aye.
Commissioner Legria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Motion passes. Hey. Thank you. Move on to continue business, and it would be the website.
Did we not, did we do reports from chairs and commissioners?
Oh, we don't.
I think we skipped over that.
All right, let's do reports. I'm not doing very good to get it, put my contacts backwards or something today. Let's do reports from chair and commissioners. Uh, let's start with Charles, since he was the last one here today.
Hello, hello all. Hi, everybody. Want to welcome everyone to the new year. Also thank Jeff and his staff for the wonderful Christmas party we had. Fun, very, very, very festive, and, and I enjoyed myself, and so did my wife. Mary, also, I want to thank you for all the work you did preparing for it. And just want to wish everyone a good new year, and looking forward to a very, a very positive and productive new year.
Thank you.
Kind of report, but, you know.
Deanna?
I have nothing to report, but I, I just want to express that I'm very happy that the Seaside office is opening again. Those are great news. I hope Eric is doing well and that he can join us back. And during this time, I also want to thank Mary for helping us bring the board meeting packets and executive sessions, all those materials closer to us down to Seaside, so thank you, Mary. And yeah, wishing everybody a wonderful 2023.
Pamela?
I'd also like to express a great Christmas party, and thank Mary and others who helped make it so successful, enjoyable.
Good teamwork.
Rebecca? Just, I'm ready to have a really productive year. You know, I really enjoyed, I feel like I'm hitting my stride a little bit more as a commissioner. I'm understanding, you know, the, the work ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to being a good contributor to this. And it's, I'm happy to be a part of this organization. Gerele?
I just want to say one as the yes, and Happy New Year. Actually, I, someone, you know, I had COVID in November, and I will tell you it kicked my butt, but I, I'm just recently getting back to my level of energy, which was not a whole lot in the beginning, but it's a lot better today. And I'm just looking forward to the challenges of this new year, because as we all know, we have a lot of challenges in the domestic front and in our community, and I just hope we can make, just continue forward.
I also want to thank everybody that worked on the Christmas party. It was really a lot of fun. It's always nice to try and get to meet some of the drivers and some of the others that work here that we don't necessarily see all the time. And it's nice to have the Seaside office back up and running. I've been to a few events, and I think it's really important that we make sure that we're putting ourselves out there, where they introduce elected officials. And it ends up being city, county, things like that. We are all, we need to remember that we are also elected officials. And we need to try to bring that up front more, not just us, but the fire districts, the water districts, all those other little districts that are elected. We need to make sure that we are getting out there. It's like the money that CARES put out. They went to states and counties and cities, but we had to find to get what we needed here through that. So I think if we start making sure people know that we're elected officials and we get that recognition, too, this year, it would help out, especially during elections and stuff also, because a lot of people see that ballot, but they have no idea what they're voting on when it comes to special districts. So if you're somewhere where they're going to introduce elected officials, you might let that person know that there are other elected officials there, too.
And if I might, I want to get this up on the screen and say, I need there was a call yesterday from the National Organization of Special Districts in talking about legislative priorities. Of course, my computer is a little bit wonky, so I have to get this up here. Try to get it out of the way so I can get just want to hit share screen.
You have a chair?
Yes.
I, I believe, I'm not sure who of us is up for reelection this year, so I would.
It's Tracy, myself, and Gerele.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, are you, wait. Are you guys able to see the little thing I put up there from the Census Bureau? Okay, unfortunately, the people in the room can't see it.
Can you give us just a synopsis of it?
So they had a call yesterday talking about legislative priorities and they prefaced it with, you know, talking about cities and counties and exactly what you talked about with the CARES Act where money was going to cities and counties, but not special districts. So this, this breakdown shows that there's nationwide, there's ninety thousand one hundred and twenty-five state and local governments. That is obviously there's fifty state governments, local governments, there's ninety thousand seventy-five. And out of that, there are thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine general purpose governments, and those include counties and cities and townships. Remember that number, thirty-eight thousand seven seventy-nine. Under special purpose, there's fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-six local governments. And those are divided up into two groups, independent school districts and special districts. Special districts is made up of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-two, so almost more than cities and counties combined across the nation. That's how many special districts there are in all fifty states. So that importance of educating people what special, special districts are is very important, especially to our, our, our state legislators because they just don't think about special districts and what we do, what the purpose of them is, whether it's water, fire, transportation and the scads of other ones as well. So I'll send this, this, I'll send this the slide deck out to everybody this week, so you can kind of run through it, so.
Thank you for sending that. That sounds like good data.
Let me write myself in.
Deanna just thought about writing a article on what is a special district to the Daily, to the historian.
Haven't, but we could certainly.
You know, especially around election time, so that we could fit in.
That sounds good. I would be willing to work on that. And if we can kind of get it under the umbrella of the transportation district, would that be appropriate?
You could do it as a, you know, if the board is okay with the individual commissioner taking that on as a task and writing a column.
Okay, can I get a little, I'd like to head that up and, and get some advising from you, Jeff, or somebody to make sure that.
Yeah, and, and I I'd be willing to help with that. We won't need a motion, just a consensus, because it wasn't on the agenda, so it's just, there's a consensus there, right? But I see some hands raised, first being Charles.
Charles?
Yeah, Jeff, I, I assume now they'll deal with this on a level at the annual meeting. Because I think we, we often think that the SDAO, being the Oregon version of special districts. And I, I think, um, I think, uh, I didn't know there were actually that many nationwide. But I, I don't think they're really, even as, as we, as we meet as a, as an organization every year, I don't think we really kind of get that home hammered home at that meeting either. So yeah, and they may mention this, what you have at the, at the annual meeting, but I didn't realize there were fifty-eight thou, thirty-eight thousand, really. It's, it's incredible, really.
So Kathy has her hand up and she also just put in the chat box with the SDAO website as a template for that kind of thing.
Okay, great.
So Kathy, did you want to expand that? Kathy was on the, uh, the webinar yesterday as well, besides myself.
Yes, I would say that SDAO is doing their absolute best to reinforce to everybody the important role that they play. And we just had a legislative, uh, day in Salem for Special Districts Association. So when you hear city councilors or county commissioners mention AOC, the Association of Counties here, Oregon Counties, and LOC, the League of Oregon Cities, SDAO is the equivalent of that in Oregon. And so they, we don't have any, SDAO as an organization doesn't have any enforcement power, but they are your collective voice to shout up your issues further up higher. And it is all of our responsibility down here to make sure that we're reinforcing those things for ourselves and for our fellow special districts. And so special districts does have letters on the website and forms that you can use to help with that, getting that message out. And I would say that, you know, we talk a lot about special districts having missed out on ARPA funds. Special districts has also missed out on monies from the opioid settlements. Because people forget that we are not under cities and counties. We are an equal and separate entity that is an elected body. And so we've had to sign on or sign off on the opioid settlements monies, but we don't get any of them. So just kind of keep that in mind. Every time somebody mentions elected bodies and important roles, you are part of that. And exactly what Debbie was saying is make sure that you're calling that out when you are in a meeting or you're talking to somebody about, uh, bringing together stakeholders at the table and they talk about cities and counties, raise your hand and say, can you please include special districts as well? And often you'll get people shrugging their shoulders and saying, who are they and why? Aren't they under counties? And even county commissioners and city councilors misunderstand that special districts are not under them. Special districts are separate and equal.
Thank you Kathy. Pamela?
Just, um, we would mention all the districts in the article?
I would. I would, absolutely.
In our county.
Pardon?
In our county.
Right, in the county. No, in the United States.
We're just on a roll today, Pamela.
Mary, she sits in the backseat. Sorry. No, I said, Mary, she sits in the backseat. Oh, sorry. Let's move on to our website discussion.
Okay, bear with me a moment. Let me switch some screens around here so I can do this properly.
And this is what we're looking at here is navigable, right? We can, you can click onto it and drop, do dropdowns and that sort of thing.
Okay, uh, all our friends out in Zoom world, can you see the website on the screen?
Yeah, I can, yes.
So, just so you know, because I've done this, if you have a comment, we can't see the, on the conference screen, conference room screen, we can't see if you have your hands up, but I can on my computer. So I'll be tracking that for the board chair. So just to preface this, this is something that came out of the work session that the board held down in Seaside back in November. And I believe it was Deanna that brought this up, when we talked about technology upgrades, that she wanted a, a new website. And it was obvious that we're going to have to have a longer discussion on that. And so that's why we're having this conversation today. So what I'm, what my goal is to, is to gather input from the board members of what you like, what you don't like about the website, so I can see if I can make the changes to the website locally. And I should be able to make most of them. If I can't, then I can get our trillium to, to help us out. But I think for the most part, I'll be able to do that. This is a reminder, this website was part of a funded project through ODOT. The Nawada Group received a grant to build a new website several years ago. And the website was to be set up in such a way that other transit agencies could use our template that we have and, and construct their own website based on that, not only just in Oregon, but across the nation. And I don't have the, the numbers of how many or which agencies have taken that on. I know there are some in Oregon that are using. There's other organizations out there that have templates for transit websites, National Art App is one. It's okay for, I think, a very basic, basic thing, but it doesn't have a lot of the tools that we have available to us. So, you know, it was important for, and the state recognized that, that we got this grant, that we had a, a website that had a trip planner. So when you open up the website, you see that bold map on the left-hand side. That's the trip planner that, or the map on the trip planner. You can actually go on to and click on the individual routes and it'll take you to that route or to the route. So you can see, you know, the Columbia connector. And then you can download the schedule in a PDF, so you can print it if you want, or you can just bring it up. The schedule down at the, at the bottom by clicking that, it shows you the different times for each stop. Uh, that was important for us. You may recall that earlier last year, we had a new trip planner on here. Because the trip planner that we had and we're back to now is a Google-based one. And there's big limitations in the ability to plan trips far enough out. You know, and we looked at it as, you know, if, if you're coming from New York, you're coming out to Oregon, you're gonna either take the train probably, or maybe to fly in. Maybe they want to come out to the coast. And so they're able to plan a trip, but they can't plan it more than sixty days out. And I don't know about you, but if I plan a trip, it's generally months out. And so they don't have that ability. So we, we we, we wanted to update our trip planner and we did. But what we found out, their projection on hosting the new trip planner was going to be considerably more expensive than, than we could budget for. And so we had to go back to, to this, this trip planner. Just until we can research any other companies that could host it for us. It's a really niche market and there needs whatever you call it. So there's, there are challenges with that. So trillium's looking at that for us. But it was considerably more expensive. And so we had to go back to this trip. It's still a good trip planner. But the other component that it doesn't have that we added was the first mile, last mile. Like Tillowood County, for example, they have a very robust dial-to-write system. They have more dial-to-write service than they do fixed route service. So, you know, that's a reservation type service. And so the, the, the new trip planner has the ability to show on the, uh, on the map that there was an ability to get to where they wanted to go. Once they got to Tillowood, then they could, you know, they could set up a ride with the dial-to-write and get to one of the parks, for example, on the main page State Park, they could get to that via dial-to-write. So that's another component that this doesn't have the ability to do. Google, as great as it is, has a lot of limitations, so. Huh? Rebecca?
This is very impressive. I, you know, I, I really feel like that's the detail that is, that people are really seeking. That's the meat of it, really, you know? But I, I also support, um, you know, that the homepage is, is kind of like where it needs to be simple. It, it, you need to see, you know, all the different components of, of what people might want to see. Probably most of the people want to see, you know, where the schedules are and, and all that, all that detail. But you can't start out with that detail, in my opinion. Now, I'm kind of old school, I'll admit it, you know, it's a, I like to be led in, you know? And I think the home, homepage is kind of like, you know, should be really simple and clear. And, you know, provide real basic stuff, you know, like who, who we are in very simple form. In fact, you know, that's what I'm going to talk about, I was going to say in that application we're going to be talking about later, you know, it's that you're looking for maybe for more detail about. But I think people don't want to have a lot of language at the beginning, you know, they want to be led in, in, in simple form. So I guess my, uh, I have no problem with the details once people navigate down and drop down into all this. But the homepage is really like you're welcoming and it should be very easy for people to see, you know, like where, how to get help, you know, a little bit about the organization and about the organizational framework of the organization. What, what, what do you do in an emergency, you know, so that you're not having to go through so much detail in that homepage where it's overwhelming, see? And I also think that's a visual, I think you can approach that visually where if you, we all know that when we're experienced something that is, has all the same type font size, you know, and it's just as overwhelming when there's too much information at the navigation stage. So the homepage, I would highly encourage, you know, simplify. And I, I don't know quite how we could just talk about that unless we want to look at it, but.
Well, that's why, that's why I have it up here, so we can look at the down.
But that's not the homepage.
This is the homepage.
Oh, it is?
This is the homepage of, of Nawada. So when, like, if you see our buses up in the address bar at northwestoregintransit.org, that's, that's the homepage for Nawada. And so that's on all our buses. We want them to go here because, again, like you just mentioned, a lot of, most people, they want to be able to see where our routes are of our system. And so as the five transit agency alliance, this is our system.
Okay, alright.
They don't care that there's five things. They just want to see where they can go, you know?
But I mean, still, that could be like the next dropdown from the homepage, because maybe some people aren't wanting to talk about routes. But they're not there on the website to look at the routes. They're looking at, okay, how can I get, you know, reduce, can I get some help with passes? Can I get some help with, you know, the, the paratransit and, and all those things? So if you're, if you just get rights directly into the, the routes and everything, then you kind of bypass maybe some of the other stuff that people are looking for.
Well, again, most people, when they first get on, they want to see the map of the system. They want to be able to plan a trip. And then from there, you know, again, here's the dropdown for all the schedules for the whole system, sorry, for the whole system. Again, all five agencies. But then if you go down below the folds, you'll see the individual agencies. And so we click on our agency, Sunset Empire. This is, this is our homepage. So the other thing we were looking at was the home pay, or the home of the website. And this is, this is the, our homepage.
Okay, yeah, and I find that it is a little bit busy, that our homepage.
Okay, so what do you, what do you consider busy? Let me, let me walk through what we have. So these buttons up here are, are different things. So there's like contact us. So it gives our address, it gives our phone number. You know, transit center information, paratransit information. There's also.
Can we go back to the original one there with all the little bubbles? Yeah, that one there. So is that the very first thing that pops up?
You just sent some.
On our, on our website?
Yeah.
Okay. Because, you know, some people, you know, they're just, and maybe I'm just playing too, I was too low of a common denominator. I don't know, but have you, have, have there been any concerns that citizens have brought up about it's hard to figure out how to?
I haven't received any. I haven't too. Mary, you're shaking, you're.
I hear people say.
I hear people say, I just want the schedules, I just want the schedules, I just want the schedules. And so.
Maybe, maybe we're, we're just, there's just so many of those bubbles is that it just needs to be broken down into segments a little bit more so that it's not visually overwhelming and I.
So maybe consolidate some of these?
Yeah, or it's a, and it's a graphic kind of thing, you know, where, you know, small, medium, large. That's how our eyes need to see stuff, you know, the big, something big, you know, and then the secondary. And it for usually detailed information is the smallest. Bit of, but, but the headers are very important to draw people in.
So on that first one, on the other one, but consolidated the five, with the five districts.
The homepage.
Yeah. To me, that, I, I really like that. Because if I'm going to go on a bus ride, I wanna know where they go. So up on top, see, so then, see, I could take that and I could plan my trip and I could get my passes. I don't care, sorry, I don't care who's on the board if I'm going somewhere. So what's under there, more button?
Uh, there's some rider rules, and this is still kind of in construction. We're, we're working on updating this right now, you know, how to ride, you know, frequently asked questions. Here's an explanation, using a trip planner, paying for the ride, our policies on bikes, wheelchair, service animals, and more. Examples of our bus stops, so they can recognize that they're, you know, look for that Northwest Connector sign. So they know that they're in the right place.
This is great detail. That's important.
So I like that, I like that first page, and then maybe you have a couple of tabs, like, like what, what our service, what services we provide? And then who makes the whole thing work? I don't know, to me, this is a great starting spot. Because.
But it's not, but, but for most users, this is not the starting page.
Okay.
So then, so then this is the thing. I, I started bringing up the matter of revising our webpage because we, at the agency that I work with, Consejo Hispano, we do get calls from people asking for help on finding schedules and that kind of thing. So my coworkers and myself, we started trying to navigate this in a practical way, the way people behave. If you go on Google and you Google Bus, Plattsville County, or Bus, Astoria, Oregon, or that thing, the first thing that comes out on Google is not this page that we have right now on the screen. So if you humor me and you just put that, yeah, like Bus, Plattsville County. So the first thing that comes up that, that is the most obvious is Sunset Empire Transportation District. People are not going to the other one, the Northwest Oregon Transit dot org. They go to that one because that's the first thing, and that's the page that comes up. So this one, the way that Rebecca was also explaining, it is super busy in the sense that all of those bubbles are the same color, they have the same importance, they're all on caps. Uh, there's lots of, lots of, lots of letters, just letters, 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 things to read. And then the one at the top, which is what people usually are interested in, schedules, routes, and fares, it's kind of away, like, it does take a little bit and some savviness to get to that. Also, the other thing is that most people nowadays are accessing webpages and information through their phones. If you open this page on a phone, it's not, it's not user-friendly. Actually, there is an tab that says, uh, schedules, routes, and fares. When you open it on the phone, you would have to go through menu at the top. So the first thing that a person sees when they open this webpage on their phones, it's all the bubbles. It's all the bubbles, and within those bubbles, it doesn't say schedules, routes, and fares. So it takes a bit for somebody to kind of figure out, like, where, where do I look for the schedules? And then you would have to realize that at the top right corner, there's that button that says menu. And under menu, the first one is routes. And then you get to what you want, but it's not that easy. So if somebody is kinda, they, they kind of give up. And that's what we've gotten. We've gotten also people saying like, yeah, I was looking for, I, I couldn't figure it out, I couldn't figure it out. I even asked my mom to do this, just so that I could have like a little bit of like, let's see, you know, my mom is seventy years old. She's actually pretty savvy, she lived in big cities. And she, she ended up saying like, I, I can't figure out where the schedules are. So the other thing is that this page that we have on the screen right now with all the bubbles, we're calling it the bubbles. The one with all the bubbles, that's the link, like, if we go on our Facebook page, Sunset Empire Transportation District, and then to the left, it has the website. This is the one that they come to. The other one that we started showing, the one with the northwestoregintransit.org, that one is actually very navigable. Like going on that one, it's easy, it's not as busy, it immediately takes you to what it is that you, that you wanna get. Plan your trip and, you know, do that. So if you can, please click on the other tab there, Jeff.
Hang on, just got stuff down here. I don't wanna move, because I gotta look at Facebook and we can correct that, so I'll go to that new page.
Yeah, so then the other one that we have, the, the northwestoregintransit.org, that one is actually really nice. I have to admit, I haven't opened that one on my phone to see what it looks like. But whenever we, we think about this, we really have to now be aware of what it looks like on a phone. Because most people now don't look information on computers, it's just on their phone and it changes a lot. Thank you.
Okay, so which tab did you want me to punch on?
Uh, just, just, just the other one that you have there on your left, the, the NWOregonTransit.org, which you have saved like on the, on, yeah, that. So this one is actually, it's very clear, there's not a lot of lettering, there's not a lot of stuff. Under more, that tab that says more, that's where we can have the list for the Board of Commissioners and like all of those things. But what people want, it's this page. And this is not very obvious to get because if I'm coming from California or from, you know, Montana or whatever, I'm not gonna look for Northwest Oregon Transit. I'm gonna ask, hey, seaside bus, hey, Astoria. That's what people are looking for on Google, and it doesn't bring them to this page.
Okay, you know, that, that's great, because that's something that we can do very easily. Like I, like you mentioned with the Facebook page, we can make sure that the link is the northwestoregintransit.org. So in all our literature, that's what we should have, so they land on this page. Um, 'cause you're right, everybody's looking for the map and how to plan a trip. Um, you're a hundred percent right. As far as what's on Google, that's something I'll work with Trillium on because we can, we may have to pay some money, but that's fine to, let me get back to Google search. I can't even spell Plattsville. So it, it would, it would actually bring, uh, we gotta find, figure a way to maximize the northwestoregintransit.org address to make sure that that's at the top. Um, and you can do that with, with Google. It costs money, but I think it's very nominal.
And it, and it's worth it.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, and you're, you're spot on, I hadn't thought of that, so that's, that is great. Debbie?
Go ahead, Charles.
I, uh, to me, um, I agree with everything since so far. To me, what I think, I think what we should determine, all the other, we, all the other things are very important, it can tell information about us. And somebody will need one of those things eventually. The most, most, I think the best word on school, on searching is the word more. So I think you click here, and then there's more button, and you click that one. Don't put everything on the more that you, where you land, put the most important things on that one, and another more button. So you, you, you see five of, you hit, you see this, and then you add more, you got five. And that, that five are the second most important things people are looking for. Don't see it there, hit another more button, so you're basically burrowing in, but you're not cluttering up each screen. So you only have, let's say, five, five, on this, you, you, you go from that screen to, to five of these here, right on the screen, of the bubbles. If you don't see it there, another button to the side, very prominent, says more. And then you look on, hit that button, and you go to the next five important things. And I think it allows you to get rid of some of your bubbles, frees up the page a lot, and it makes it not as cluttered. But to me, I search internet a lot. And I like when they say, when they, they show me some stuff and they say, oh, so you don't see what you want on that page, right? Okay, click this button. Oh, not on that one either, so click this button. Without cluttering up one page, a single page, so they can really look at that page very easily and see, oh, it's not on there. So what, and I go from here, but there's a button there that says, okay, if it's not there, click this button. And you bury, I'm empty, they just sort of dig into the website without the clutter.
So what, what I'm hearing from you is consolidate these buttons down to five, but then add a button that says more?
Yeah, so they look at these five, so it's not, not of those. And then you, another button, very prominent, so they don't run away and say, damn, I didn't find what I was looking for. They click on that one, then the next most important button that they see. And then I, I think that, and then unclutter each page is what that will do.
Okay, if, if we're to add another more tab, that, that's gonna be challenging. I can't say it can't be done, but that's gonna cost us money.
I, I, and, and I don't, I don't, I don't know the particulars, obviously, but I just know the websites that I find easiest to trend, to, uh, to navigate.
Sure.
Put everything on that page, uh, so it clutters it, but it gives me a way to, that I can say, well, it's not in those, not there. Oh, oh really, it's not there, okay, well, try this. You know, not there, right, try this. So I don't know how you do it or setting the page up, but that's just the ones to me that seem to be most easiest to navigate.
I, I can play around with this, I, I've got great information.
Rebecca?
I do, this is all good, this is all, I think we're heading in the right direction. Website is like a calling card, I mean, it's something that people refer to. We have users who are riders and we have visitors who are trying to figure out who we are. And those are, you know, they're totally different people that come to the website. But it's important too that we have organizational information too. But certainly, I, I'm not trying to, you know, compete with the, the writers' needs at all. It's, it should be, that's what websites should be, just like a plethora of information, right? But what we're trying to do, the information's there and the, and the, you know, and the text and the detail and everything. We're just trying to make it navigable for.
So it's not information overload?
For both of those two different entities, the writers and people who are trying to gather organizational information.
That makes sense.
The writers being the most important, they're, they're our bread and butter. But say someone outside trying to find out an organizational structure, they can find it as well.
Right.
Right. From, from the outside, you know, like, like you said, like visitors coming in, they don't care. They don't care that there's five separate different agencies, they don't understand that. They're just looking for the provider, and that's why the.
Exa, yeah, exactly.
But everybody here, they'll see that, they'll just think that we're a, a single agency.
Right.
But that detail is great for, you know.
Right, for our, for our needs, right, exactly. Okay.
Have a good start?
I have a great start.
I, I love this front, this first page though, I like the, I like the, the map, the interactive map.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
You know, the one thing, I heard somebody mention about the bubbles all being the same color. Those colors correspond with the map. So like our, our buttons are close to that. If you go to Tillowood's, their buttons are this red. If you go to Newport's or Lincoln County, it's a dark blue. Benton County is the, the light blue. So that's, that's why those colors are those colors, they're identified, so. Anyway, okay. Jeremiah?
I have a question. All those little boxes that are, when you line them out, did you line them out in terms of priority, the most asked questions by our customers? Or did you just throw them out there?
Initially, when the site was built, Trillium was the one that put stuff in, and then I've added stuff since then. And I can, I can move them around, it'll take. I've never done that, I've never moved them around, but I can, I can do it.
Because I, I, I'm old-school as well, and I like, I like it simple. And so, uh, to me, as a customer, uh, it would at least help me guide what is more important in, or more important or less important in terms of where I wanna go.
I need to put my frame of mind in the writer's position, that's what I'll do. I'll have you guys all the way at the bottom.
Okay.
That's where we need to be, at the bottom, right? At the bottom.
Okay. All right, shall we move on? To new business, is everybody ready to move on to new business?
Yep, 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 yep.
I'll just walk a couple screens here. Here's Kathy smiling face. She's pretending to be a board member again, I think so.
I like to see her face up there.
Okay.
All right, um, next on our agenda, new business, SDAO conference, voting delegate selection.
Okay, Kathy's gonna take on this one since she's our, um, our SDAO at-large person. So Kathy, it's all yours.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, yes, I asked Jeff to make sure to put this on the agenda because I really wanted to highlight not only that we need to choose our voting delegate, but how important it is. Because some of you know other people that sit on special districts and sometimes people send their people to the conference and forget this part. And so, um, it's the annual meeting that the voting delegate needs to attend, which is the big meeting and people can get nominated from the floor to hold positions. But it's also the caucus meetings, and everybody is welcome to attend both of those parts of the conference. And they're really great places to get some information exchanged, to network, and to get information directly from both our lobbyists for SDAO and our executive director will have both of them at our caucus meeting. And so, um, please, I encourage you to attend the caucus and make sure that we have a voting delegate. Because as Jeff said, we do have some board positions that are available every year and up for reelection, or every couple of years at least. And so, um, it's an important year. My position is up for reelection and I encourage you to, um, consider me for reelection.
So, you know, this is something, I'm gonna give you a little history, you know, of how Kathy came about becoming, getting voted in. There was another person representing another transit agency and Kathy had expressed interest that she wanted to, to take that, or be that person, be that, hold that seat. And so we got, her and I had a discussion about that, and then I got with my, some of my partners in other transit districts. And, um, uh, we made it happen. It's just, it's just like, just like politics, you know? A lot of work is done behind the scenes, and that's what we did. We worked behind the scenes, um, I had the motion and the second all set up and it happened and everybody was shocked, to say the least. Um, but they were very happy that Kathy was elected. She's been a great board member, so I would encourage you to, whoever the voting delegate is, is to.
Nominate Kathy.
Make sure, make sure, and have the conversations ahead of time. I, I was gonna let you know, I won't be at the conference in person, I'll be attention, attending virtually. Otherwise, I would help you with some of that background. Otherwise I would help you, um, with some of that background work. I do know of one other person that's going to be there for sure on the transit. And I can let her know. So she, I'll make sure she's at the caucus and try to interface with you.
And, and attending both the caucus and the annual business meeting are really important because people can get nominated for the board seats at the annual business meeting. It doesn't happen very often, but it can happen. And so we need to have all of the voting members that are available at both meetings. And so. And I'm the, the secretary on the, on the SDAO board now, so we don't want to have to refill that position later on either.
Charles?
Uh, who, I don't think I know, maybe I know this already. Who actually is attending the meeting? I don't nominate someone for that meet, for that, and they're not going to be there. Who else coming to the meeting?
Pamela, myself, Mary.
Remotely.
Remote. Okay, so Rebecca, remote, remotely.
And Tracy is going too, isn't she? Is Tracy going?
He's remote.
I'm going in person.
Okay, good.
And I'll be remote as well.
Okay.
Excellent. I got you. So I just wonder who, if we start, if we vote to nominate one to go to that meeting that they're going to. I guess you could do it from Zoom as well, but, okay, thank you.
No, you can't.
You have to be in person.
You have to be in person.
Yes.
Okay.
For the caucus meeting and the annual business meeting, you'll have to be there in person and.
If I nominate someone, they'll have to be someone that's going to, that's there. Okay. I, I'll be there as well, sorry.
So the, uh, past practice has been, as long as I've been here, I believe Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been the board chair that has pretty much been the delegate every time. Is that correct?
Um, it has not always been the board chair because we didn't always take the time to delegate somebody. So as long as we have been taking the time, it has been the board chair.
That's all I have to say. So staff is recommending that, uh, somebody, uh, make a motion to appoint somebody to be our delegate of the SDAO conference.
Charles, I see your hand up.
I think, I'm sure, I think you, weren't you, you represented us last time?
I think I have once and Deanna, didn't you represent us one time? Or am I wrong about that?
I don't remember. I might, maybe on one of the virtual ones this past few years, but, uh, I don't, I don't remember actually.
I believe that's correct because, uh, the chair wasn't available.
I think that's, yeah.
During the caucus time.
Right.
Well, I certainly like to nominate the chair, but if, uh, I also understand the importance of having someone like, like Diane, Deanna, who's, who, you know, who's the future of our board. But I, I've certainly, Debbie would be fine. So I don't know how to make that a nomination. So maybe smarter people than me can.
What advises? Um, I'm willing to go. I know Dan, Dan is probably more than willing to go too. So maybe Deanna and I should just flip a quarter and see who, what, what ends up.
Sounds good to me. Very telemonic.
Would you like to go? Because I'd certainly let you go if that, if you would like to.
I'm okay either way.
Well, like I said, you are both welcome to attend. We can only have one person vote.
Just we let Deanna vote and we'll both attend. And I'll make sure she votes the way I want her to.
Debbie.
Okay, okay.
So I'll change, I'll change my motion then. Deanna, Deanna Nino to be our, our representative to the, to the caucus.
And I'll accept that.
I, I accept the responsibility gladly. Thank you.
Mary, would you take a real call vote, please? Mr. Smith, Schmidt? Yes. Mr. Nino?
Yes.
Mr. Legria?
Aye.
Mr. Withers?
Aye.
Mr. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Kathy, you have the delegate.
There you go.
Excellent. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As a, uh, the caucus chair, I sent out an email asking for agenda items. I just want to make sure that you got that email. I'm just checking to make sure that email is, is arriving where it's supposed to.
I did receive that. When, when was it sent?
I got it.
This week.
Yesterday or day before yesterday.
Yeah, because I checked it yesterday. So I'll double check it and I'll get back with you if I didn't get it.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it either.
Okay.
It came from Kathy.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll check it.
Yeah. And it was based on register, registrations, and I'm not sure when that list was pulled. So I just want to double check.
I tell you what I'll do. I'll, uh, I'll send it to the whole board. I'll just forward it out of my email right now.
Okay, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Can I make a little question for, for Mary? Is that, you know, I did receive from SDAO a, uh, an invoice?
Yes.
And so that, does that mean that they haven't registered me yet?
You're registered.
I'm now registered.
And the invoice will be sent to us and I've already taken care of it. I called them. If, because you probably put your own address, your personal address when you registered. I, I tried to beat you guys and say put our address and I didn't ring drive.
I'll make note of that in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
So did we get a copy also? Of her, of her invoice?
No.
Okay, so she needs to forward that to you.
I've already called SDAO and they're, they're making it into one invoice for me. I've already taken care of it yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. So moving on to the qualified entity review of stiff discretionary project.
Okay, so as you recall, um, we submitted an application for the stiff discretionary program to, um, expand the Lower Columbia Connector route, um, to add a stop at Portland International Airport. As part of the review process, um, they, they asked that the, uh, local area commissions on transportation have an opportunity to weigh in on all the discretionary applications that are within their jurisdiction and also the qualified entities. We are the qualified entity for Clatsop County, um, and we are also the service provider. So our application is the only one, um, that has gone, or that, uh, this board has the opportunity to comment on. Now what I'd like to do is I'd like to let me move the screens again because I started writing something and I can read that to you. Decided if you want to use it to make a submittal. You're not required to, but, um, this is a highly, highly competitive year. And so I would encourage you to submit a, uh, a comment. And just give me just a moment here.
Rebecca?
I need a little bit of guidance here on a couple of things is that, um, because I feel like what has been, what's in our application is very succinct and very good. I don't know if being, you know, expansive and flowery and, you know, just adding a lot of filler, in my opinion, to what is the existing facts that you've written down here is really necessary. But if you've done these applications more than we have, is, are people looking for more expansion of more detail? And to me, uh, it just sounds, it just seems like busy work in a way, you know? Unless you know that people are looking for that filler, that they think that that'll make for a better application.
And I'll go over that in just a moment, as soon as I can find where.
I just have a quick question while Jeff's doing that. Has this application been submitted?
Yes.
Okay, where, where would the comments go if we make some comments or a letter where, where and how if you've already submitted it?
That's what I'm working on. Bringing up the screen. I'm trying to find it in my files and I'm having difficulty files. So bear with me.
Thank you. Yes.
This is just food for thought on Jeff.
Oh, I know where to find it.
The full, the whole management.
I get way too many emails. Okay, just bear with me so I can get this shared. Can you see that? Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So the reason I think it's important is because what I wrote, um, and if you saw in the instructions, I tied some stuff in with the Oregon Public Transportation Plan or Oregon Public Transportation Plan with the goals that they have. So I, I, I tied our application with these different goals. And so I'm going to, I'll go through and, and read what, uh, what I put in there. So obviously I assume that you're recommending that we, that this get funded. I'm going to just say, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, oh, etc. Okay. So what I wrote is the Board of Commissioners for Sunset Empire Transportation District is recommending funding for this project through the stiff discretionary program. At our December ninth, uh, two thousand twenty-two board meeting, we adopted our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five strategic priorities. And this project is at the top of the, uh, of the top priority section. When the idea was originally introduced to us in November by our executive director, we were very excited at the prospect of offering riders in Clatsop and Columbia Counties with the opportunity to access the Portland International Airport without having to make multiple transfers in port. This is especially true for seniors and people with disabilities. Having to make multiple transfers with luggage is a large barrier that prevents the community from using this route as a travel option and fills, I'm just going to do the acronym, the OPTP goal of equity. So there was the first one I tell you. Then I went on to say this project also fulfills, this is really jumping. Also fulfills the goal of mobility and public transportation user experience by making it easier to use transit either going to or coming from the airport. The OPTP goals of safety and security and community livability and economic vitality are met by providing a service, a service that makes it possible for our vulnerable riders to avoid having to walk in the downtown area to the light rail station. It also makes it easier for riders, uh, coming from around the country and world to bring their bicycles to Astoria to begin their journey on the Oregon Coast Bike Trail. The, the WADA's mission is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by offering service from Portland and the Willamette Valley to the coast so people can leave their cars at home. The OPTP goal of environmental sustainability is met with this project. The OPTP goal of accessibility and connectivity is most definitely met with this project. WADA is all about connections and the route name of Lower Columbia Connector showcases the connection of Portland to Astoria. Our interlining with Amtrak and adding this stop on the Lower Columbia Connector will help grow ridership to the point where it will become a sustainable service, relying less on discretionary funding as outlined in the OPTP goal of funding and strategic investment. We hope that, uh, this enhanced service can become a catalyst for other transit agencies to look at the possibility of making connections at airports that serve their riders. So that's a statewide thing because like down in, in Eugene-Springsville area, Lane County, they don't have service to the airport. Up on ninety-nine, which is kind of silly to me. So I really wanted to tie in the, the goals from the public transportation plan. And that's why I think it's important to add, or to have this comment in there. Because probably not everybody did this.
I think to me, it's like, it's kind of like putting an offer in on a house and adding a letter. All right, see, so I would suggest up toward the top that you add downtown Portland because to me that makes a little bit of a difference. It's like the second or third paragraph.
Oh, uh, safety.
Yeah. Because I think if they know it's Portland, because it's not a nice area down there. When my daughter and I.
Yeah, I put in the downtown area, but I.
And there's a, a good way to, he can wordsmith that.
Yeah.
I'm just going to do it right now.
But that's the way I look at this. It's, it's like adding just a little bit to that offer, you know? We're, we're a young family getting started and I myself would probably look at that letter and maybe go with that other than a higher bid from a corporation that was trying to buy my house.
I've got another expansion item that's maybe covered elsewhere, but when you're ready, Jeff, tap me. Okay, um, is, you know, when you said connect, connection to Astoria, you know, to, let's expand on that by saying Astoria and communities down the Oregon coast. Be, because we do connect with our partners.
Right.
And I know you've, the, the whole tourism, you know, uh, piece, you may have already mentioned it somewhere, but maybe it could be mentioned again in, in this, uh, seg- segment. Oregon, down the Oregon coast.
Oregon North Coast?
Yeah, how far down do we go?
Yacht. That's considered central coast there.
It's too close.
I'm going to download Oregon coast.
Pamela?
I'm just a little concerned about your number, uh, question six. What type of accounting system does your agency use? And the answer you put was automated. If.
That's on the application. Your application's already been submitted. We can't change that.
But if, I was wondering if you could put like a automated system.
Know this letter?
Strengthen, what I mean.
No, that's.
I don't know.
Inside baseball.
That, those questions in the application are just for, to make sure that we have the capacity to operate this.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So the, in the accounting world.
Yeah, that has, this has nothing to do with that. You wouldn't want to put accounting stuff in this. You want to tell more of the story.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
We tied everything in with the Oregon.
So this is strong enough?
Yeah.
Just to say automated.
Yeah, we've met the requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't remember.
I believe.
Deanna has a question and Charles.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Deanna.
Thank you. So the first one, Jeff, you can just saw at the top of the comments, the beginning of that. I just wanted to check the, the dates. We adopted, okay, yeah, so it's because on our previous, our December meeting, that's when we approved you putting in the application. That's why it's December 9?
Correct.
Got it, okay. So then my, my only, I really like this, and I think it's very clear and well-written. My only correction is that the two instances where we say fulfill, it needs, it's missing an L. It's F-U-L-F-I-L-L-S, fulfill. That's it, thank you.
Hold on a second here. How did you spell it?
Two Ls at the end.
Either way is okay. That's why I just looked with one L.
It passes.
Thank you.
Charles?
I was gonna put on my Deanna hat and on those fulfill corrections as well, so. That's a, that's a Pamela and Deanna thing on the misspelling, so I'm, I'm good.
I'll, I'll put the extra L in, so I'm just gonna save this and I'll...
Yeah, I mean, because when I looked it up, in the UK, in the UK, they use one L. In the US, it's two Ls.
That's kind of like buses. In the UK, they use one, no, they use two, we use one S.
That, that's what I saw, the, the LLS.
All right, anything, any other wordsmithing or things we would want to add to that?
No.
Not wordsmithing, and, and I don't remember all the things that were said. What I, when I was reading this, is that I didn't feel that there was a strong emphasis that all people would benefit from this. I just got the feeling that the direction was just the same, not just, but the strong focus was seniors and disabilities.
That's gonna help us.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But I didn't feel there was a strong, or that it's inclusive of everyone, which it certainly is, because everyone has problems of getting, putting luggage on the max line and stuff like that. So that...
The ease of transfer.
Yeah, for everyone. I guess I didn't feel that was really emphasized for anyone.
Okay.
Okay, would you need a motion to allow this to go forward?
I saw move for us to provide comments about the project that can be compiled for ODOT on our application to extend service to Portland Airport.
I'll say.
Thank you, Garry, most of us get it. Mary, would you take your call, please? Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Legria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Merrill?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. I'm gonna add one little statement here before I pass it on to the Executive Director's report. Something I forgot to say was, our past board member, Tamara Teal, was appointed to the Board of Transportation in Pinewood River County recently.
Excellent.
It's Paul Cat, the Columbia area.
Yes, that's right, Cat. So I attended their meeting virtually, and I heard somewhere that Jeff might have wrote a little letter. Help her in there.
Oh, I believe the email was in the board packet, so. Yeah, Tamara had reached out to me, and so I got ahold of my counterpart over there and showered her with, yeah.
Excellent.
She's pitching her down?
She, she... Yesterday, yep.
Excellent.
Okay, all right.
So when we have in-person public transportation conferences, and we'll be able to hook up.
She said she might try to come up Saturday.
Saturday.
To the SADO conference.
SADO.
She didn't know she was going to be able to, but she said she might try.
All right, so you have my report. A couple of other things I wanted to talk about. January 31st, we kind of, we kind of made the decision, valid board, that the board's been doing this for some time. This won't happen again. We'll get on this earlier. But January 31st is the homeless connection. We typically do rider appreciation day with that, and so all the materials are out there on the street that rides are free and within the county on January 31st. And Mary, I'd like to mention it to you. I've seen it be, your Facebook post being shared by everybody. A lot of organizations, the counties, cities are sharing this, so that would be great to get that out.
It's got it out there. Should be on the radio, in the newspaper.
Yeah, it's in today's paper.
It is? Good. Good.
I recite the dot SADO. So one of the other things I wanted to let the board know, say though, we've been waiting for buses, new buses, that we've had on order for quite a while. The two freight liners that will be operating on the Lower Columbia Connector, they're currently sitting in Indiana right now, almost all the way done. The only thing that they need is the yield signs, the flashing yield signs, and don't know when those are gonna be made available for us. Once those are on, then it'll come out to us and we'll get them wrapped. So I don't have an updated timeline. But the other problem that we have is the, I believe we have six low-floor buses that we've had on order since 2020 or 2021. Our grant is expiring at the end of this fiscal year, January 20, or January 31st of this year, or 30th. ODOT has made the decision that we need to cancel those orders and put them out for a request for proposals again. In doing that, then they will extend the, they will extend the, the dates of the grant agreement. The only problem with doing that that I see is we probably won't be able to buy as many buses, because the prices are gonna be probably at least 40% higher than what we originally had on order. So that's come down from ODOT, so that's what we're gonna be doing.
Where would that bring us to receive? When do you think the, an estimated time when we could receive those?
Well, nationally, there's a 20,000-vehicle backlog, over 20,000 buses on backorder right now. And they believe that it's gonna take five to seven years to get out of this hole. So I can, I can comfortably say I have no idea. We have no idea. Nobody has a can idea. The problem we have is, you know, it's the chassis that are holding us up, and we're competing with other, you know, private industries, Ford pickups, ambulances. We're kind of the low person on the total pool, because they can make a lot more money with, by selling, you know, Ford F-150s. So that's, that's where we're at now with new buses. Fortunately, we have a great maintenance crew. I should update you on that as well. Scott, our maintenance supervisor, is slowly winding down to retirement. We've hired a new person. His name is Tom, and his last name's stuck in my mind right now. But Tom and Scott are working together, and I'm confident that once Scott Foley is retired, Tom will continue to work the great work that our maintenance staff is doing, keeping our buses on the road, so. Other than that, you know, again, like I put in my little graphic of ridership, December, we were up 17%. Year-to-date, we're now up 5%, so it's nice to see us trending in a very positive manner. Again, the Lower Columbia Connector still is, the ridership on that has just been tremendously wonderful. You know, summertime, we'll be carrying over, well over 1,000 people every, every month, so that's great. You know, I should add also, so Token Transit, you know, we have it in place. Benton County has it, Lincoln County has it. Tillamook hasn't had it. Tillamook is going to be rolling it out. Once they've rolled it out, then we're going to add the option to purchase the connector passes on Token Transit to make it easier for people. So that's, that'll be a nice, a nice bump for everybody.
Excuse me, what did you say? Soon we'll have the ability to what?
Sell the Northwest Connector passes. The Northwest Connector, there's two passes.
On the token.
A three, yeah, the three-day pass is $25. Yeah, $25. And the seven-day pass is $30. That gives them a round trip and unlimited travel from here to Yacht. So that'll be great. Very excited about that. Really, let's see, let me just go through this real quick. Oh, I will say, the Community Transit, or Community Transportation Association of America, CTA, which I always enjoy going to, that's coming up in May in Oklahoma. I've been involved with the Bus Rodeo Planning Committee, but I'm not gonna be going this year. I attended plenty of conferences with my speaking engagements, I kind of ran up our, our travel line item. So I'm, I'm gonna forego going this, this next year. I, I may send Jennifer, we'll see. I apologize for staff not being here today. We've got Jason, Mary, and Kathy, but Jennifer is having to carry the load of three people right now, today. Over there, she's the dispatcher supervisor and manager. Stephanie is out here, and so one of the dispatchers is over here covering. And then our paratransit supervisor is out right now, so. Stephanie challenges, here we go, but I got Seaside open. Sometimes who's on vacation? Yes.
Who's, when will Eric be back?
Early February.
I was wondering what were some of the solutions proposed about the driver shortage at the conference? Penny?
Well, there, there was good discussion. I don't think there was anything groundbreaking. You know, we presented our program. People were very interested in that. I think, I don't remember if I remember, if I mentioned it, but there was a person that works with Secretary of Transportation, I, pardon me, I can't pronounce his last name. I still call him Mayor Pete. She, in her presentation, after this, a day or two, a day after our presentation, she called our names out and how impressed she was with that, and directed us some specific money from the Department of Labor that will, that we check all the boxes, but she called Julia and my names out. That was, that was a wild moment, because the secretary's office knows about our program, so we're really excited about that. But it was interesting having the, the different transit unions there. Transit unions, it was great, because there was a lot of dialogue. I will say that unions were looking for, you know, more pay. You know, that was, that's their answer. And it, and it's very true. You know, that's why we did what we did with our new agreement. But there wasn't anything groundbreaking, you know, because everybody's just struggling with the same, the same thing. You know, we're all in competition with everybody else. Not just, not just CDL-related, but every sector of the economy. And it's that way across the nation, so.
Okay. Is that it? Are you gonna go through the priorities?
Pardon?
Run, are you gonna run through the priorities or not?
I, I wasn't going to. I just made comments on there. Not much has changed on them. You know, really happy with the on-time performance again because of the tablets. We used to generally run third with our partners down Tillamook and Lincoln County. Now, and we've been, since we put those tablets in, we've been having the best on-time performance. Not that I, I'm happy with just 65.8%, but it's much better than it used to be.
Can I make an anecdotal comment about Tillamook County's district? I was speaking with someone who lives in Manzanita yesterday, and this was just a, I thought it was kind of an interesting perception of this resident saying that the Tillamook County Transportation District is more geared towards tourism, transportation. And I was wondering, would you agree with that? Or do you think that's a misnomer?
It, it's a, it's an important component, just like, you know, when you look at us with cruise ships coming tra, coming down, we activate two seasonal routes for that. That's huge for us. They, they have a lot of activity down in Pacific City, you know, and they bought a street, a streetcar bus like we have down Seaside, Canadian Beach. And that's the first of three that they're gonna have. So they are gonna be deploying some other, other of those streetcar-type buses to...
It kind of suggested to me that, you know, maybe Tillamook needs to talk to its, you know, full-time residents and find out where maybe some gaps are.
And they do that.
Okay.
They do that through their transportation planning. They, you know, when Doug was alive, Doug used a lot of consultants. They had a lot of, consultants did a lot of planning, but there was a healthy, healthy outreach.
Okay, good, no.
Throughout the county, so. Their new manager is starting February 6th. I believe it's February 6th. He's from Colorado Springs, really strong planning background, transit plan, planning background. So this is his first manager's job. So look forward to meeting him. We've hooked up on LinkedIn, so look forward to getting him and getting him up to speed on Nwada and what we do, and he's excited to learn about, more about that, so.
Good. Garry?
What's the status of our driver pool? Are we short drivers or...?
Yeah, we've been hiring some, and we, in fact, we've got, I think, two or three that are going out for testing here within a couple of weeks. Once they pass the driving test, they'll get their CDL, and we can use them. I think I, I don't remember if I mentioned it, but I did. Jennifer and I will be meeting. We can't meet until next week to start looking at when we can start restoring some service. The one thing I'm gonna be very conservative, conservative about, though, is I want to make sure that these people that we've trained are gonna stick around with us, because I don't want to start service and then have to cut it again. So I want to have a certain level of comfort. And we won't start everything at once. We'll, we'll piecemeal it. You know, with an equity lens.
Do they still, do they get their CDL from Tillamook Community College or here?
No, they get their CDL from BMV. We do, we do our own training, but they're, the driving test, they do go down to Tillamook, because Tillamook has somebody on their staff that's a certified, they're allowed tested, whatever. And so we do send them down there.
Okay, so the college here doesn't do that?
No, the college is going to be, thank you for mentioning that. The, the college is looking at a potential partnership with Tillamook Bay and starting a program up here. And Chris Brightmire, who's the president of the college, he's also now the chair of our Transportation Advisory Committee. He brought it up at our last meeting, asking if that would be of interest to us, and I go absolutely. Because our trainer, we're losing him to retirement this year, actually this spring. So they're gonna involve me with the setting up of the program. They will, they, we will be able to take advantage of that. So very happy about that. Very, very happy about that. So that was my executive director report, and then... So that was my executive director report, and then I guess I can try to answer questions on the staff report. Leadership team report.
Jennifer's busy today, so she's not with us, so any questions that Jeff can answer for her, maybe? No? Okay. I, I just had one that Symphony, I've seen the name spelled a couple of ways, but more often this way. It's on Jennifer's report. All right, and Nicole?
And Nicole was out also.
Okay, any questions Jeff can answer on her report?
No questions, but I was pleased to see the amount of rides, the ride assists were a good amount, so.
Yeah. All right, and Jason, he's with us. Any questions for Jason?
Hey, Jason.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Jason, I'm excited about the, the high school training for students. That's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a great opportunity to get out there and engage the youth.
Yeah, because we've talked about this, how important it is for kids to have those skills before they go out into the world for work, or, you know, if they move out for school. It's great that they already feel strong in those.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Is this easy on you guys today?
Thank you.
All right, Kathy, any questions for Kathy on her report? Anyone? Anyone?
You know, I'll, I'll make mention of something. So Kathy's taken advantage of some of these micro grants that are available through ODOT, and has been successful. She was able to get a bunch of bike helmets and, and other things. That's become a, a good source of opportunities. And so she did it through the auspices of Northwest Oregon, where we, Northwest Transportation Options. Sorry about that. Without the name Sunset Empire Transportation, they came out, they decided to write some rules about it. We were both a little dismayed about it. That they're, they're only, they're limiting agencies to two applications a year, a rolling, per rolling year. So since she is Northwest Oregon, or Northwest Transportation Options, I decided to go after one also to buy a couple of bike repair stations, one to put here, and then one to be determined where we'll put the other one. So hopefully, you know, they won't see that we're related.
This is a case of writing the rules after the fact, and it's unfortunate because the way that I geared my applic, my first applications was based on, this is a well, come frequently, as much as you need. And so I geared my applications on basically applying for monies here for Clatsop County type of activities and planned on expanding and dipping back into the well for Columbia or Tillamook Counties for similar types of applications. And so I'm still gonna try that and see what they say. And along the lines of education and outreach, the Clatsop County Job Fair is on the books and on schedule already, and I have a meeting later today to work with some of the organizers on potentially creating a pre-set-them-loose-on-the-floor training session for, hey, you think you can't get a job because you don't have transportation? We have help. And so Jason and I may be doing that before the job and career fair actually starts. Jason is a good partner for those kinds of things.
Do you have a date for that, Kathy, the job fair?
I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I do have a date for that.
All right, anything else with Kathy? And Mary, any questions for Mary? I know she's been working hard. I just wanted to just kind of review, and thank you for allowing us to participate in, in the rider appreciation day, which is something we, we have done for years. And we do it in conjunction, in case you don't know, with the homeless connect event that they hold. That's a CCA Community Action holds at the Convention Center in Seaside. So us having free bus services are helpful for those that are homeless to get to the CCA event where there's all sorts of assistance and, and help. Jason and Kathy will also be there with a table or setup there. So what, what we usually do is have refreshments here, and now in Seaside, we'll be able to have, and go have some, and so that people can come in and talk about the bus. Everyone will get, on the buses, we're gonna have a, a letter of information about what we do, what our services are. I'd like to put your name, the board names on that letter, if you wouldn't mind, as members. That would be okay. And then there'll be a, a drawing where we, where we give out prizes. And so in that envelope, there'll be a raffle ticket that they can fill out as well and, and turn in, so. But the goal is just to do outreach and answer questions and, and then have a little fun, fun with it as well. It's kind of hard to get to everybody because not everybody can come into the Transit Center that's riding the bus because they're going to work or whatever, so we just try to cover bases as best we can. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mary? Looking forward to going to S B A O.
The, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Mary, the event on the 31st, is there, can we just stop by during the, during the day, or?
Sure, sure. Yes, please, either Seaside or Astoria, either one, right? It'd be wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, and then Sue is on vacation. Is there any questions that...
Mary can answer?
Jeff may answer, or Mary, she knows. Rebecca?
Uh, it's a, it's a comment, and I think we, we have, have spoken about this before, but, and I'm, I'm not sure, you know, kick me to the curb here if this is inappropriate, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, how important vetting potential, you know, the applicants is, and, you know, thorough vetting of applicants, I would like to enter into the record of comments.
We're good.
Okay. Anything else from the group? Charles, Deanna, can't see you. Just turned off the screen here.
Nope, all good.
All right then, if there's nothing else, if nobody has any objections, I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting.
See you in Sun River.
See you in River.
See you there, hard work.